Good evening, welcome. We will call the Wednesday, May 27th Kittle Hills Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we enter our moment of silence, just ask two things. One, John Taylor is not with us tonight. His wife was in the emergency department this morning. So just, I think she is home now, but if you'll keep her, keep Teoda in your thoughts. And then also, just want to recognize the passing of our fire department support sergeant Gene Foreman. He's been a longtime active member with the volunteer firefighters. He's a past president of the fire auxiliary. And he was a member of the department since 2002. And if you would keep his wife Gail and their family in your thoughts this evening as well. And with that, we'll enter a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First thing this evening is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm sorry that we're getting started a few minutes behind. My fault, but we'll keep rolling right ahead. The first, or the next thing is the time set aside. This is the first time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak at public comment?
At the board seats this evening, I've put new emergency information cards. You've got a magnetized one that'll go on whatever refrigerators will take them now. And another one that can be peeled and stuck on cabinets or repealed and stuck someplace else. These were, these were designed and all in response to this community appearance commission who asked that we redo them. So there's some there at the back for anybody that wants some.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks. Thank you. And if anyone's not here tonight that's watching this on TV later, can they stop by town hall and pick up some of these?
Yes. While they're, they're for any place. Primarily we got them for rental houses that where people may not know exactly where they're located. If you put the address right on front of the card, but obviously, you know, they're useful for everybody.
Absolutely. These are great. These are great, thank you.
They're attractive too, aren't they?
They are.
They are, yeah.
They look great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at public comment or bring anything forward? Okay, hearing none. We will actually move all the way to new business, item number one. And this is to schedule a public hearing on proposed amendment to chapter 152 subdivision, section 152.59, recording of exempt plots to allow exempt plot recombination of previously subdivided lots that will reduce nonconformities. Mr. Gregg?
Yes ma'am. Good evening. This proposed amendment to our subdivision ordinance will require a public hearing. And what it does is it allows smaller than 15,000 square foot lots to be recombined. We have some lots that, several different reasons why this is helpful. Sometimes two subdivisions come together and the closure's not exactly right. Sometimes lots have very odd shapes and it makes it easier to build on them. Even if they're smaller, if the lots are recombined and we have more normal looking houses and subdivision situation. So we recommend that this amendment be approved and it will help eliminate some nonconformities and no, in no way will it create any more nonconformities. And you can't use it if it creates any type of, furthers any nonconformity. So on May 19th, the planning board reviewed and forwarded a recommendation for approval on this, on this item. And staff recommends the board set the required public hearing for June 24th, 2015.
Questions or comments?
No.
And the June 24th date instead of the June?
Eight.
That's right.
We need time to.
We need enough to advertising.
Yeah.
That's right.
Great, okay. Questions, comments? If not, a motion would be in order?
I make a motion, we schedule a public hearing for the proposed amendment to chapter 152 subdivisions. 152.59, recording of exempt plots to allow exempt plot recombination of previously subdivided lots that will reduce nonconformities. We'd like to schedule that for 5:30 PM on June 24th.
I'd second that.
Any comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're on to Commissioner's agenda. Mr. Midget?
No, I don't have anything today.
Commissioner Appleman?
No, not today.
All right, Commissioner Reba?
Not today.
Mayor Proton Hogan?
I was going to bring up the issue of the safety on the beach road. Can we do that now?
Sure.
Okay. Steve Albright and I have been speaking for a couple of weeks about trying to improve safety on the beach roads, particularly at the areas of the crosswalks. And unfortunately, there was an accident this weekend and it was in Kitty Hawk, right? Kitty Hawk. But it had nothing to do with a crosswalk. It just seemed like it was a child that just darted into the street, so. But anyway, we were trying to look for ways to improve safety. And this came about because in my travels, you stop at a crosswalk to let people go by and the cars are coming towards you. And I think just anecdotally, it seems like two out of three of them just, they go before somebody realizes what's going on and then they finally stop. And I've even had people come partway out on, in front of my car and then the other ones keep coming the other direction. So we're looking for some solutions to this. First of all, we have to have, the state has to approve anything we do. And based on what's going on right now with the state and the finances and such, we, I don't think we'd go into anything with the expectation they'd pay for it. So it's something that we might want to look at at some later date that would require some funds from us. And what we have looked at so far would be really minimal, to tell you the truth. I think we have 17 crosswalks on the beach road. And if we used, if we would use this one, is it on screen?
Yes, it is.
We can't see the screen over here. If we would use something like that, and I'm not sure if that's the proper one to do, it would be a matter of maybe six to $8,000, which cost benefit analysis tells me that it'd be worth it. So we're going to continue looking at that. And Steve's been in touch with Jerry Jennings at the state and we're going to work on, see if we can come up with something to improve the safety there. And maybe even get Jerry here to talk, to be at one of our meetings and maybe get up there and have maybe a mini workshop at one of our meetings or something to talk to us about safety on the beach road. I was going to bring it up under budget because I was going to say we buy it, but we can't yet because we have to get permission first, so that's what I have.
Did you, okay, you guys have one that yours?
I think that's all I have right now, thank you.
Any thoughts or questions on, on that?
I've seen these in other places, they would go on the center line. Which that's going to attract some attention because you almost have to swerve around them.
Yeah, they have ones that have like 40 pound rubber bases and they fall over and then you send them. And they have other ones that are attached, but they have a spring back thing. So if somebody runs over them, they just tear their muffler off and then bump.
Yeah, I definitely think we should get the spring back ones because if there's any indication of the Currituck Bridge, I mean, those things, those yellow metal things, they pretty much knocked every single one of those down, so.
I think it was a gain for most people, see how many they could get down, so. Because you'd cross and there'd be one or two left, so.
But that's something we're going to look at when, when we'll get through the budget in the next couple of meetings and then we'll be looking at this again, okay?
That's good, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Move on to mayor's agenda. The first thing this evening, and this was in your packet, is a proclamation for National Beach Safety RIP Current Awareness Week, which is June 7th through the 14th. And we have, Dave is here, welcome. If you have any questions about that, but there's a proclamation in your packet declaring June 7th through the 14th as Beach Safety and RIP Current Awareness Week. And with your permission, I recommend that we adopt this declaration. So I will make a motion as such.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion or comments?
Nope, not for me.
All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Dave will be here to introduce the full team. He has one member sitting beside him, but to introduce the full team to us at our June 8th meeting, correct? That's the plan? Great, that's always a highlight, being introduced to the guards that we have with us for the season, so thank you. We look forward to that. Next in your packet, we discussed this briefly at our last meeting and I think we had agreed to bring our calendars to look at scheduling a joint work session with the planning board to kind of explore large, single-family dwellings and potential regulations as such. So in the memo here that's before you, the planning board has regular meetings scheduled for June 16th, the 21st, and August 18th. Our meetings beyond June, we have one for July 22nd or August 26th. So if we're looking at trying to choose a time where one of the two boards was already meeting, those are dates that we could consider. Certainly, we're not limited to just that, but these are dates to start with.
I have, my calendar, our meeting in July is on the 13th.
That's correct. The 22nd, 26th are meetings that we do not have scheduled.
Oh.
I'm sorry, that would be the second meeting if we were falling in line with having the second meeting of the month. But we typically don't have a second meeting during the summer, but we could if we wanted to add the second meeting back, sorry about that.
Okay.
This far out, we really don't know as far as the planning board, what's really going to be before them, June, July, and August. We certainly would have the flexibility if we chose one of those dates and it looked like it was going to be a heavy agenda to adjust the time if we wanted either, you know, starting earlier or something like that. So I'm not sure, anyone, what you guys think?
Are you going to have the meeting on our night and have them attend or vice versa?
We could do either. If we don't want to add additional meetings to the calendar, then probably the best suggestion is to look at when they're already scheduled to meet. But if that, if we want to add meetings, then those were the dates that we could add back to be consistent with if we were having two meetings a month. We just typically don't do that during the summer. One, there's normally not the volume of business to conduct and two, just the hectic, crazy schedule.
Then maybe we should do it in August? Give more people a chance to attend, I guess?
So maybe look at even August 18th? Go on a planning board date? Or?
It's going to be the week after our meeting. Or the Tuesday after our meeting in August. When I'm, I'm available.
Or either add a meeting and do it on the 26th.
I'm open on any of those dates.
Same here. Yeah, from both days, so.
I am as well.
I think the sooner the better.
The, if we do it on, in their meeting, then they're, they're already going to be there. And then if we're all open, then we're available.
What time do they meet?
About 3:00.
Same thing, 5:00 same.
Well, and going back to that point, you know, they're already meeting also, to both of your points, they're already meeting on July 21st, if you're talking sooner rather than later. So I mean, I guess we're looking at then possibly either July 21st or August 18th to try to do it, congruent with one of their already scheduled meetings.
That's roughly a month difference and I think we had said before that we don't want to wait a whole lot of time on this.
Is everybody available for the 21st?
I think we want to get that, that issue settled. In my opinion, the sooner the better.
True. The 21st would be bad for me though.
Would be bad, okay.
Yeah, and I've seen in the past, people complain about having a meeting in the summer when they're busy and they, like, the public can't attend.
Yeah.
And they, you know, this could potentially bring people out.
Okay, whatever, whatever.
We go with the 18th of August?
That works for me.
Okay.
Okay. So we will, yes.
Not to really confuse things, but you could consider August the 10th, which is your regular scheduled August meeting. And if it appeared that the agenda was going to be large, heavy, then you could have a second meeting.
Which we could always even schedule that night?
Right.
So what do you think about that? The 10th?
Yeah, it's fine.
It's fine.
It's kind of a compromise in between the July date and the August date.
Right.
Everybody's in town, okay?
So Monday.
Monday, August, so basically, we're inviting them to this, this meeting and this becomes the joint?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Okay, good, good idea.
Okay. And consensus works, we don't need a motion on that, do we? Or would you like one?
No ma'am, that's fine, the consensus.
Okay, there's consensus, great. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have under mayor's agenda. We can move to town manager's agenda?
No ma'am.
Thank you. And Steve's not here, as you can see tonight. He was under the weather, but we certainly hope he feels better, but we can move forward tonight, figure we're okay without legal counsel tonight. Debbie, we'll move on to consent agenda?
Yes ma'am, one item on the consent agenda, the minutes from the May 13th meeting and staff recommends the consent agenda approved or submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, this is the second time we've set aside for public comment. It just seems like we were just at the first, this is, the first time, or the quickest we've ever come all the way around for public comment, but I don't know if anyone joined us since we started. Does, does anyone wish to speak at this public comment time? All right, well then we will move into our general work session, which is on the recommended budget for fiscal year 16. Maybe the way we have previously done this in the past is Debbie's kind of walked us through the budget by section, highlighting some of the key points and just basically giving us the opportunity to ask questions section by section of Debbie, or you can see the staff are here tonight. So if everyone's agreeable, we'll kind of tackle this that way? Okay, is that good Debbie?
Yes ma'am. Please stop me, slow me down, speed me up, whatever, whatever works. On your tab two, that is the beginning of the budget ordinance, the recommended budget ordinance, which addresses the departments and the divisions as totals. It goes into your, explaining what the budget officer is allowed to do and how they are allowed to transfer monies. It speaks to the tax rate. We discussed when the budget was presented to you that the recommended tax rate for the MSD is 33 cents per hundred and then an increase of three cents townwide, including the MSD, is recommended. It goes into listing your water rates and so forth and that, security deposit, tap fees. All of your rates are listed and this would be what you will actually adopt. Behind that is the general fund fee schedule and as addressed in the, in the budget message, we are recommending some increases in fees. Fees have stayed steady for at least 10 years and the planning department did some research with some of our neighbors and we feel like this is putting us more in line, establishing a more comparable schedule between the other local governments. And that goes on for a few pages, many. The other ordinances, let's see, the public works complex campus, that will continue on. The wireless communication. Got the reserve for the oceanfront nourishment. Beverly will be working all of that in, into the, into the new recreation facilities and the shoreline access. The only one that's going to require new adoption with this budget is your construction and improvements to street and related stormwater management. That one expires this year and we're going to request that to be renewed, ending in 2025. Okay, on tab four.
Debbie, real quick, when we're adopting this and what becomes part of this, you know, I know ultimately we're looking at adopting the ordinance, are these attachments with that when this is adopted?
The, the one that.
The one that, yes ma'am, yes.
The fee schedule is a part of the budget ordinance.
Okay, I'll just give you this, like, just two little minor L's missing in pools and.
Okay.
Just, so it's grammatically corrected what we're publishing, I wasn't going to worry about it, but.
Thank you.
Just minor.
So page, page two of tab four speaks to the highlights of the budget revenue wise. We'll see that there is a small amount of growth that we're anticipating in our local and state sales tax, occupancy tax, and land transfer. And then on page four is the itemized budget revenue projections. And I'll be happy to answer, or Beverly would be happy to answer any questions you might have about what we've, what we're recommending that we budget. We tend to be conservative in our revenues, but not overly so. I think, I think Bill Pitt riled us in.
Thought you were being too conservative.
Yeah, he called it our slush fund.
Right. The privilege license, is that the business license that was done away with?
Yes ma'am, yes.
Okay, the law changed.
Which is why there's no revenue. Right. This was the last year and as you see, it's reduced because of the way the law.
Changed based.
For this year. Spacing it.
Any questions, anything with the overview of the revenue projections?
If there are no questions with that, if you'll turn to tab six, we'll begin with the individual departments expenditures. When you're looking through this and it's, and it's got the overall, the overview and the staffing, the page that you need to be looking at is pay study implementation, since the board did adopt the pay study at option two and that is what's in the budget. And again, I thank you for doing that for the employees. On page 15, the 2% matching 401K contribution is reflected departmentally and we are recommending a 1.7% COLA. And that also is reflected departmentally. Page 16 and 17 have the itemized expenditures for the administration department.
I had a question on, on that one. The funding for health plan and personnel services. In the summary, it says that we would had a 5% increase is in our overall health plan costs. Is this funding for health plan the same information? Because it's significantly more than a 5%.
And that could be the premiums increased 5%. We may have a different mix of employee level insurances, be it employee only, family. So it's probably.
That's.
And that's, in that particular account, we acquired a position from planning.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I wasn't.
Bye. Well, yeah, we, yeah. You're the administrator. I'm sorry, I thought you were thinking townwide. No, we're, I'm thinking townwide, it may be an individual apartment.
Changed a little bit, some went down, this one was a big jump, that, okay.
That's what it is, I'm sorry. And what Beverly's saying is that, for example, during the year, if you had an employee that got married or one that was married and they had a child and then they'll go to a family plan. So things, things can, but that's the reason for such a big jump right there.
Exactly. The county workshop, they were talking about their election expenses were going to be higher this year because normal, normally during a, the year of a municipal election, the municipalities are responsible for covering for election cost. But they were saying that this coming year, and I don't recall what they said would be on the ballot, that would also, maybe it was some primaries or something, that because they were going to be those primaries, that they would have to cover a portion of the election cost. So they were budgeting more than they would in a typical off year. Any of that trickle down?
Okay.
That may be, our, our figure came directly from the elections office.
Okay.
And, and that's how we typically get in a call, Melvin, she tells me what to expect.
Okay.
We hadn't heard anything about the county elections.
But, but isn't, isn't our election cost solely for our municipal election?
Yes.
It's not for any other, even though people may be voting here. Here, and maybe that's what, for them, it's going to be an additional expense because of a primary which probably won't fall in November. It might be, could be in March or the spring for a primary.
Okay, got it. Any questions for the administration? Actually, I had one question. With special events back under our administration, is that revised for the fireworks? Or what's the, from what we originally budgeted and what we revised and then our actual?
Let's see, the.
Sorry, line item 557001.
26,000, you've got the, we have the fireworks, the ice cream.
Three for ice creams, and three for the trash attack.
Okay, I'm trying to remember when we, we have a budget revision that took it from the 26, or that was.
The.
To the 48.7?
Well, we have, like Mary was saying, 20,000's fireworks, 3,000's trash attack and 3,000's ice cream social for 26.
Right.
And then there's another line that has the reception, the volunteer appreciation, the volunteer appreciation reception, that's in work session expense.
Right, this is, I'm sorry.
So you're looking at actuals for 14, 15?
Yeah.
Me, it was forty-eight, seven, thirty-seven.
That's the variance I'm trying, I was trying to. I can't think of it either and I know we've obviously done a budget amendment.
And that's a good question and it could be that we doubled up in a year on the, I, I, I don't, I can't answer that right off the top of my head while that is. Well, the, the, um, the appreciation reception may have come out of there because that, that would have been a budget amendment. In fact, I'm sure that is because you can see here, we've only, we don't have it there. That was.
It wasn't that much, was it?
That was fifteen hundred, maybe.
Twenty thousand.
The appreciation, no, I think it was that much.
Well, it's, it's not worth slowing it, you can email me.
And it could be a mistake.
No.
It, it could be a mistake in the, in the estimated actual, but the, well, the revised budget, no, that wouldn't be a mistake, so. Something was added that we just don't recall, but, but those are, those are the three things that the twenty-six thousand's for.
Okay, and I get, the reason I was bringing it up was just, it would be worth knowing what was added, I can't recall either. Because we wanted to just make sure it's not something that we may have to add again and that we need to adjust that line item, that's all.
Yeah, I'm thinking, did we, because the fireworks are in July, did we do some fireworks in July and then budget for them? I don't know.
Yeah, sorry. That's okay, that's all right.
Didn't we get a grant for fireworks?
We get a grant for half of it.
Yeah, we budgeted just in case we didn't get it.
It was part of the revised budget. Well, we actually signed a contract before we get it, so we have, we're, we budget for the full amount, the twenty thousand.
Right.
Okay, well, we can come back to that or we can follow up.
Was that, was that really, anything to do with the electric installation around the pond?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, it's just, the only thing that comes to my mind.
Well, you could just let it happen. That would have been, that would have been buildings and grounds, that wouldn't have been an admin.
Okay.
I wouldn't think.
I don't think so either.
Okay.
Well, we'll find it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, your next tab, tab seven is the buildings and grounds. On page nineteen, just some highlights, the debt service fund for public works, phase one and two are included. Following capital improvements are recommended, window replacements here at one oh two Town Hall Drive, carpet replaced in police and fire. Replace the interior and exterior police door locking systems. Hopefully the meeting room upgrades will be completed and continuing funding capital maintenance to beach accesses. And page twenty has your line items.
The one thing I was hoping to see here was, we had talked last year about adding additional porta potties at the beach accesses. Especially as we get closer to our beach replenishment.
Is that contract to services? I'm thinking it would be. Contract to services, your porta potties, John, Sean?
Yes, it is, and the, the plan is, we did increase before the last season, but we, um, and we also increased the cleaning rate with, so, or, I think that's how it works. But anyway, we had a good success, we're, we're getting one good, for this year, I'm saying we finished that last year.
Okay, cool.
Sean's porta potties.
Porta potty guy.
Hey, they're important, especially.
Oh, yeah.
This number of people coming in.
Page twenty-two shows your capital outlay itemized out.
I would like to mention something on that. I had highlighted the reservicing of the roller rink and I was wondering about the use that it gets and such, but in meetings with Debbie and Sean and just some general discussion about it, there has been in the past some plans and there has also some talk about resurrecting some plans to be able to make that multi-use in several ways perhaps with, one of them being actually it, two full court basketball courts would fit in there and it would only require the striping and the poles and the cost would be minimal. And also, you, they play soccer in there also. And there can be some striping, I don't know how confusing it would get on the striping, but that can be arranged also. And those are some things we're looking at, so, and, and Sheila and I discussed it and we, you know, to reservice it and keep it up is probably the best thing in any case because it would cost more to take it down. So, we're going to, we're going to try to keep it up and make it a multi-use thing, so that's not an issue for me. Where it might have been, we weren't doing that. Okay?
Yep, and I, I know it's not, not until the next fiscal year, so the seventeen plan that's, that's mentioned in there, but I like that we have some money in there for rebuilding the tennis courts. I went over to the Meekins Field tennis courts recently and it's like, wow, they're really in bad shape. And so I'm really happy to see this in there. And I also know that the Outer Banks Tennis Association is starting some conversations about trying to find enough quality courts in the Outer Banks to start hosting some tennis tournaments here. You have to bid on those tournaments and you have to have so many courts within a, so many mile radius to be able to, to bid. And they were talking about how it would be great if we had, you know, if our courts could be used, they certainly couldn't in the condition they're in, but this would put them in that condition. But the schools has money to do this, yeah, they need to do their courts and then hopefully the county can do the parks and rec. But then, there are enough courts in the area if they cannot be of the right.
Quality.
Quality and in, in the right conditions, so that might be something interesting in the future.
I wonder if, if with their thought process, if that would be something that the visitors bureau would consider as for one of their grants that promotes the shoulder seasons, I forget what that's called.
Yeah, and, and they were thinking that that's, they would intentionally do, host a tournament during one of the off seasons. So, yeah, anyway, I think that's great, so I was happy to see that. And I like to play tennis. Throw that out there.
All right, if no additional questions on that, tab eight is the beach nourishment division. We've talked about the recommended tax rate in the MSD and then the townwide tax, which will be significant enough to repay the annual debt payment. It will be a special obligation bond, the bond will be repaid over five years with principal and interest payments due annually. And then page twenty-five just shows the, the fee for the tax collection for that special tax and then the capital outlay, beach nourishment capital reserve.
And this is where, because we were questioned before, even though it's going to be structured over a five-year payout, it, it, we will be looking at this annually. The seated board will be looking at this annually and, you know, if we were to find that the estimates, you know, come back less than, than all the calculations that have been done and we did not need to have the tax rate set where it was, then that could be adjusted and calculations changed.
Yes, ma'am, it's my, it's my understanding that your tax rate is set each year.
That's right.
But that, but that is at this point the amount that would be needed to repay the debt.
Based on all the formulas and what we anticipate.
Over the five-year period, that's the townwide portion and MSD portion.
Yes. Okay, all right, tab nine is our finance and tax department.
Just real quick, we have the sheets at our desk, are we going to cover this at a different point or?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
The, we have the sheets at our desk for the property values within the MSD.
No, we can cover that anytime, Beth.
Yeah, that's, I'm, that, Commissioner Midget came in yesterday and was requesting, was requesting some information about some tax values specifically in the municipal service district. He had requested the average values for the, some selected properties and we just broke it down between the residential, historic condo, commercial, timeshare, and vacant. We got both the average values and the median values for those assessed, for those properties. And the, in the MSD, to give you, to give you an idea of what the total tax on those properties, what the municipal service district tax would be, what the townwide tax would be for those that are in the median and average category as well as the townwide average and median property value, residential property value. What would, what would those taxpayers be on that, paying with this budget that you set?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then, tax and finance department. Page twenty-nine. The employee insurance renewal rate did increase by five percent for both active and retirees. The general insurance is expected to increase by five percent and we continue to recommend Dare County Tax Department doing our tax collections. On page thirty, for the itemized line expenditures.
Um, I know, you had questioned this and we talked about it earlier on page twenty-nine, you know, the, the recommendation is to stay with Dare County for doing our tax collection and, you know, I mean, that's ninety-nine point two percent.
I'm sorry, I talked to, I talked to her earlier today, you want to tell?
Well, we just, we just put this in here because Beverly does review it each year to make sure that that is still in our best interest and, and we feel that it is because there's, there's benefits beyond simply having them collect the taxes. They, they have a tax department that's very aggressive. I think it's a convenience for our, our citizens to be able to do one check or one, one credit card. I think it does help keep our, our rate up. If we did bring it back in-house, there would be cost, additional cost for the town, so it wouldn't be that you just would wash that amount. But we, we just, we just wanted you to know that we, we do continue to review it each year.
You look at it each year, okay, yeah, the, the question was kind of more semantics. When we spoke this morning, I figured that's probably what you do is, is we want, you know, to, to look at it each year, but that it just hasn't made sense at all to consider not, you know, to consider bringing it back in and not having Dare County do it when they have such a high collection rate. And that it would, it would be a cost bringing it back to us.
And, and we, we feel that it would be a cost in more ways than one, I, I don't know that we could expect to maintain that rate.
Right.
And it would be a lot of, it would be some more upfront cost initially and, you know, in the initial year of bringing it back in. But again, I think our collection rate might not be quite where theirs is, but it is, it is something that we haven't, we'll keep looking at it.
Right, good, okay, well, I appreciate the looking at it and obviously we would have to really look at numbers to ever change.
It'd really be nice if the county would just cap that number.
We'll talk to them.
That's right, that's right.
Well, that collection rate, ninety-nine point two-four is just.
Well, it's, they do a great job, so.
Compared to what other municipalities and governments have to deal with, it's amazing.
They do an awesome job, that's for sure.
The MIS division is next on page thirty-two, just some quick highlights. All current maintenance contracts, the townwide system and software recommended. There was an internet, internet-based phone system requested but not recommended at this time. I did have some discussion with Commissioner Hogan, Mayor Proton Hogan, today about that. It is something that we're going to need to be looking at because our system is, is getting a lot of age and it's antiquated and the equipment's no longer made. You kind of have to go out and search for it if.
You have to go on eBay to buy a phone.
Phone issues. And, and we'll continue to monitor that and certainly keep the, keep the board posted. We are recommending expanding the backup appliance and we're recommending purchasing an OSSI police reporting software to integrate and consolidate sharing of local police information, increasing efficiency by eliminating duplication of multiple records and replacing slow and equated system.
Back up to the, the, I guess, kind of voiceover IP for the, the phone system. Did we currently share with our computer a system with something with Dare County?
For the voiceover?
Not for the phone, but for the computer.
The, um.
And the reason is, we, um.
The server, the.
It must be the server.
Backup information.
The reason is, is we, um, we had switched to a new encryption service and we had started this new encryption service and then we got an email, wait a minute, hold on, because whatever we did, we didn't do something with, we being the county now, health department affected public health for a little while. And they said that it sent KDH's email down, it shut KDH's email down, this would have been probably a month ago for a little while in the morning and I just thought that was very odd. We don't have anyone, oh. Oh, yes, okay, because I guess I was thinking, if we are doing anything with sharing, is there any way to tap into the county with the voiceover IP if, if we start looking at that? Because certainly they run lines down to the satellite offices that they have.
And the bomb center.
Yeah, that we're not too far, would there be any cost savings that we could look at? If that's even a possibility to.
Well, we did get quotes and we did get some demonstrations, but I don't know that there was any, um.
Collaboration.
Any collaboration with the county, but we could definitely, we do look at what the county's contracted prices are and we can piggyback off of those prices, but.
I would have never thought about it until the, something about the email, so maybe.
All right, well.
Look into that. It was very odd, yeah, okay. Again, it wouldn't affect this fiscal year anyway, but.
Page thirty-four shows the itemized capital outlay.
Any questions?
If no questions, tab eleven is the fleet maintenance division. Page thirty-six, it's just some highlights. Fuel prices estimated by the U.S. Department of Energy. Two point three nine nine regular unleaded and two point eight nine nine diesel. It includes the funds to relocate the lifts to the new shop and an ASHA-approved work platform for forklift.
Any questions?
Tab twelve, the planning and development department. Page forty-two, one quick highlight, an increase in supplies and materials to purchase the twenty fifteen North Carolina building code and electrical code updates. Page forty-three is your itemized expenditures. No capital outlay requested.
Assuming that flood maps get revised and, and it's put out in the new fiscal year, will that-
They're digital. They're all, they're, it's gonna be de-firmed, there will be no printed maps unless we print one.
So I just didn't know-
We print one for ourselves, and, and they won't, it'll be, basically, we'll be printing little firmets for people which are on, you know, notebook paper.
Okay, so you're, that's why we don't anticipate a, a need to increase supplies for, for that.
I don't see any, any giant increase. But we're more, we're spending more money on outreach materials than we are on flood maps, for sure.
With no additional questions, plan, excuse me, Police Department, tab thirteen. Highlights on forty-seven. Continuing the mandatory funding of law enforcement separation allowance for three retired police officers. Training recommended only for maintain, maintenance of the current certification and required career development. Recommending purchasing the, um, the five police vehicles. OSSI communications included for the reporting, and purchase five in-car video systems. Forty-eight and forty-nine is your breakdown by line. And capital outlay on page fifty.
There seems to be a, a big, on page forty-eight, um, drop in vehicle fuel from what we're, we originally, we budgeted eighty-five, it looks like we're gonna estimate seventy, but we're budgeting for sixteen fifty-five. Are we being too conservative there?
We can reevaluate, and we've had to do that mid-year before. And we're basing it on the, uh, number of cars, the amount of average miles that are driven, um, and that fuel price that we, this, we did and, we looked at in the fleet maintenance division. I mean, I know the price is higher now than it was then, but for an average, for an annualized look at that-
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we have had to go back to fuel before, so that's something that-
Yeah, that's when it skyrocketed, yeah.
That's something that, you, you know, we can look, take a harder look. I mean, I think, um, I think that has been a question about, um, assistance to-
Because we're, we're, we're not, I guess the change is, um, from what we're, is the change based on, we're thinking it's a lower gas price, not that we're gonna drive any fewer miles.
Right, not we're gonna not driving it, no, same, the, the mileage is the same, but the price is, is lower than, than last year's. And I don't, I don't have what we, what last year's average prices were, but-
Oh, we are replacing some of those older vehicles.
Should be better now, it should be better mileage, but again, we're looking at that, that price from the Department of Energy.
We, we will cer, we will certainly monitor it, and if there is an issue, we'll, we'll come back to the board.
Okay. And-
As opposed to trying to pull money from something else, or, or parking them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When this was prepared, sometime, we, around March is when the estimated actuals are pretty much set in. That really isn't asking that it could even be lower than the seventy.
I'm sure fuel's on the hardest estimate. Just don't know where it's going.
Because it goes up and down, up and down.
It's volatile, so to speak.
Right.
Unfortunately.
So, I mean-
So is the fuel.
We can address it now, we can just come back later in the year and-
Well, it, it's one of those things that i- if we have to address it, we'd be prepared at any point to address it, because we're certainly not gonna park cars and park, park officers, so.
Absolutely.
And this would affect everybody, though, because we're applying those prices to town, department-wide, I mean, townwide.
It just seemed like a, it's the first department to me that seemed like a big difference between what we're predicting in our actual and what truly we're, we're budgeting, so.
And that actual, again, is a guess of it, so.
Sure. Any other questions, or? One other question, I had the, um, one time, um, expense under operations for drug supplies and materials, um. Do you remember what that is, and, and that's something that, I, I mean, it's just in this fiscal year, but-
No. I can't remember, um.
Bless you.
That would be, you know, where we get the, the, um, special funds. Maybe they remember, but they purchased.
We used to have drug money.
We did, well, we have drug money, but-
Me too.
What happened to my drug money?
I was looking forward, Debbie. That's what I wanted to make sure, are we gonna have, yeah, or are we gonna need drug money in the future?
Yeah, but it wouldn't be charged to that line, I don't know what, yeah, maybe it would. What did we buy? Some cameras, that's right, I think we had-
Oh, we used that money, the-
The drug money. We used your drug money to buy cameras.
I used my camera money to buy drugs.
And so we're not anticipating buying anything with drug money?
No, we see-
Well, you don't know until you get it.
Right.
That you can do that, and then you put it in the budget.
And then we do a mon, a budget amendment at the time.
Yeah, I think we digress there.
Got it. Any, uh, anyone have any questions, Police Department? Okay, we can move on, Debbie.
No, I had questioned the, uh, the body cameras and why we weren't doing that sooner in my, in my talks with staff today. They said, we just wanna make sure that, that, well, we do the right thing and make sure that, not bugs necessarily are worked out, but I believe there's two of them being used, is that correct, Chief?
We have two that we're testing and evaluating, and we have decided to go ahead and purchase three out of this year's budget in preparation for next year.
That way you'll be all, you know what's all going on with everything, and we can go ahead and buy, yeah, okay, cool.
Animal control, um, on page fifty-two. Just maintaining the existing service. No capital outlay. No questions on animal control. Tab fifteen is the fire department, ocean rescue. Highlights on page sixty. Training to maintain required certification and focus on training in-house. Replacement of the nineteen ninety-four KME pumper and replacement of twenty-eight scuba bottles.
What, um, is the, the big change in the volunteer incentive program this year versus previous years?
Big change in the amount paid out?
Sorry, the estimated actuals versus the departmental request. Five oh two oh one oh.
Again, that's, that est, that's estimated, um, as of March, and it's an estimate, um-
That's paid out quarterly?
Paid out quarterly, maybe I failed to get the last quarter or something, I don't know, but it's, um-
Because I don't really think that's dropped off.
No, okay.
Okay, so it's probably higher than what's really in this estimated, okay.
And, and it may be at that point in time, two quarters might have been missing, but it-
You're not expecting any variance, sorry.
I should have annualized it.
Okay, that's okay.
So we're getting, uh, two additional lifeguard stands, is that correct?
Yes, I was gonna mention that in the ocean rescue.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I cut it ahead myself.
It's okay. Um, capital outlay is itemized on page sixty-two, you see the KME pumper and the SCBA bottles.
Chief, are they, uh, the, the ones that are being replaced, are they still usable, or did they hit their end of life at some point, I know, but?
They do, we wanna try to keep them within two NFPA, NFPA standards. Uh, right now, we're getting outside that two and a little plus. So they're about fifteen years old, because the new standards came out in February two thousand fourteen, that will add some safety features that will enhance our SCBAs.
Okay.
They're out of warranty, and it's kind of, uh, we can make one of them up.
Thanks, cool, thank you.
Tab sixteen is your ocean rescue division. We are recommending two additional stands to bring the total service level to twenty-one stands. Expecting those two stands to be located, one at Coral Drive and the other at Eden Street. And a recommended replacement of the two thousand and eight Dodge pickup. Line items on page sixty-five.
And so, with adding those, those two stands, um, does that then, um, add two additional part-time seasonal, or seasonal guards?
Yes, ma'am, you'll see that on your, um, tab, if you'll flip back tab fifteen, and go to page, excuse me, um, fifty-eight, yes.
And I'm glad you said something, because I had a question on that as well.
Okay.
So we count these as part-time, because they're not, they're only seasonal, so the twenty, because I mean, when we get a room full of people, that's obviously more than-
Oh, sure, right.
I was, I thought that's what it was, but-
Right, we, we hire, we hire more than twenty-one.
Because it's counted as a, as a part year.
Well, um, but the, but the hours that they work is, is based on, you know, the time that your stands are manned and your training.
Okay.
And time off, and so-
Right, and time off, yeah, right, sure.
It just, it just-
Basically, it's that many people staffed at one time. I, I don't know, is there, is there a number that, that you say it takes sixty bodies to do one stand?
There's a number that, David, I looked at, the total number, the hours in the week, and number of hours on the stand, and-
Yeah, it's, it's, we kind of, we have a number, you know, that I'd ask you for, um, in, I try to train for that, what happens when the people come in. Uh, I also start to look at their scheduling constraints, are they, you know, are they gonna be doing this full-time, part-time? Some of our staff have been with us in excess of ten years, and they've got full-time jobs somewhere else and are still very valuable to us as a part-time staff member. So that kind of, you know, that's the, the, that's the algorithm that we're kind of, we're playing with, but, yeah, um, we're, I look at that pretty closely once we start to look at the faces. It's, it's fairly unique, because when you speak of hiring guards, um, we're, they come to us and, you know, we're asking them a lot of questions right out of the gate, because they're very often where their very first employer are. So what does full-time mean to them, whenever we need them? And, you know, so, so in, early in the season, it, it gets a little sticky, but once everybody's schedules is set up, it, you know, it's normalized. So, right now, I think our staffing is somewhere in the upper forties.
Which you talk about, ten hours a day on the stand, seven days a week, and you don't wanna overwork, um, your employees, so you try to space it out to where it's like a thirty to forty-hour work week, and then how long does it take to fill, how many bodies does it take to fill twenty-one or nineteen stands?
As, as well-
That's the math that we try to work out.
Yeah, as well, we're also looking at the, the realities of state schools beginning in the middle of August, and, and the beaches are still open. So there's a lot of kind of, you know, us shooting the curve and, and Batman counting on me, thinking that I know what I'm doing, and, and so, we're doing it.
Well, I guess-
Might be the wrong room to-
Yeah, not, not, not a good, not a good time. Questions from the day. And I thought, when I was looking at it, was, was actually, you know, I, I absolutely supported, and I was thinking, when I looked at, okay, we're, we're adding two stands, great, and I have young children, so obviously, I think that's a valuable thing to do. But I was thinking, we're only gonna be increasing our, um, salary line item by about four thousand dollars, so-
We budget for the number of hours per stand, however many days, if we have sunshine and clear skies every day.
And also, that was because of the person that had that position, the part-time position, they were experienced and ha, had a higher grade.
Okay.
So they were making more money than the hiring rate, which changed grades.
Mm-hmm.
So the person that, because if you'll notice, that's lumped in with full-time and part-time.
Mm-hmm.
That's so, the, the new person that's taken over that half lifeguard, half firefighter, came in at a much lower grade as a hiring rate than what the person that was previously in that position, so.
Okay.
It is very, I think the chief and I have talked about that, it does look a little misleading, but it's also because of the-
Right, I think we all did.
Yeah, so even though you're adding-
The person that was in it was a sergeant.
Sure.
Right.
Right, so overall, even, that four thousand dollar increase, really, you can't say is reflective of the two.
Right.
I feel much better, because I'm like, how do you add two, even if it's a seasonal, part-time job, how do you do it for four thousand dollars?
Eleven thousand extra dollars in there for the two lifeguards.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's extra supplies and materials to build the stands, and, um, then you, you can explain some here. Um, you know, then, the uniforms didn't increase, because that's really not a huge cost for the people.
They're small.
It's, it's, it'll-
That's right.
Um, if, if, if I may, and it's something that the board all feels that they're supportive of, that maybe when we get through the budget, we can go back and discuss this, because with your approval of that this evening, then that's something that, as opposed to it being the end of June, when the budget's adopted, it's something that they could actually start at having up and running sooner in the, in the year.
Having the stands built up for this season, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Would it likely require some type of budget amendment you might have to bring back to us if you don't have the funds to move around?
Well, it would, it would be to, um, it would be so they could go ahead and start, constructing the stands, um, looking, looking into hiring, and then we could look to see if, if we would need to come back with you with some, to adjust some money.
Okay.
Okay, I'd say go ahead and do it sooner.
I think you have that sense.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions in ocean rescue?
I had a question on, on what type of truck was being requested. Um, the, the question was what type of vehicle? What I, what I normally do is I just pull the market, basically, pull what's out there. Um, I've been doing it for long enough, I've got a really good idea of specifications, torque curves, things like that. The stand out here is very hard on these vehicles, so super bully packages, et cetera. So I see what's out there, and just check the different manufacturers, see what they've got, and then try to go from there. Um, we, we typically have the same manufacturer vehicles for quite a while. Um, mostly, these vehicles, uh, what I normally do is I go to the state contract theaters and ask them to put, submit a vehicle, this specific vehicle with these stipulations, and then we go.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is they're having some pretty significant issues with their new transmissions, the rotary switch, it's pretty scary, actually.
Um, the, one of the, one of the reasons that I've been going with, uh, the vehicle, that the, the, the newer vehicle that we've got is it has very few, um, s, it switches, it's pushing, pulling, so it's, it's a, it's a little more, or less, thank you.
Um, would you guys mind if we just take a five-minute break? We're about halfway through this.
Yeah, sure.
And we'll just truly try to keep it to five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, great, let me bring us back in for the camera. Okay, and, uh, okay, we'll get started again. Um, Amy, did you wanna share some information related to the question? Um, Amy, did you want to share some information related to the question earlier?
It was actually an occurrence very forward because we pay half of the, um, we pay half of the San Beli bill in one fiscal year and then the other half after they do the fireworks. So because it's in July, it's actually in a different fiscal year, so we carried it over. And then part of it was for a grant that, to cover the grant that we got from the course, for the fireworks. And then the employee gift cards from here, so that, uh...
Yeah, yeah.
That, that added up to that extra, uh, twenty-five.
That makes sense.
Okay, good, great. Thank you very much, thanks.
Okay, so I think we're picking back up on section number seventeen?
Okay, page seventeen, um, excuse me, tab seventeen, page sixty-seven. That's your staffing, or actually it's page, um, the page behind that, sixty-eight. Um, highlights on seventy. Four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars in street capital reserve fund. Two eighteen in PAL bill that'll accomplish six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty in street and drainage. Replacement of the two thousand and four Chevy Silverado pickup and a two thousand and three Ford, um, F-250. Hundred thousand dollar contribution to sidewalk, um, capital reserve fund. And recommended increase to building, to supplies and materials for new pole saw and increase due to, um, new signage standards. Seventy-one and seventy-two have your line items.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Tab eighteen does show your PAL bill. Tab nineteen, solid waste division. Highlights on seventy-six. Tipping fees for an estimated eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty tons of garbage at seventy-three dollars and sixty-two cent per ton and eight hundred and twenty-five tons of, um, C and D at sixty-five per ton.
On this one, we used to get, uh, for free from the county. I was talking to, uh, Steve Albright the other day.
The C and D?
Yeah, the, the C and D, and he says that they gave us, uh, for the average person, if they were to drive over there, they get the first five hundred, uh, pounds free, is that right?
That's right.
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, we used to get that for free, but now they're charging, charging us. So I was wondering if maybe you could try to talk to them, because they've tried and they're not coming off of it.
I remember when that happened.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we were, we've already seated when they...
Ford's already tried.
Yeah, we were seated when they made that change. In fact, they tried to make it mid-year on us where we couldn't, we didn't even have it budgeted. And I guess through negotiations, we at least got it extended a little bit so we could budget for it. Um, but unfortunately, I, I wish I wasn't laughing because I agree, it would be nice to have it where we weren't having to pay, which is how it was for years and years and years, until just about two years, three years ago now.
Yeah, yeah, it was in, it was like you said, it was in the middle of the, of the, of the budget. Um, and, and the board, the board determined that it was a service that they wanted to provide their citizens to not have to take it to the county. And so that's why, um, that's why it's in here and we continue to do it.
We will.
Yep. Um, replacement of the two thousand and three Volvo residential and a two thousand and seven auto, um, car residential truck. Two thousand and five Chevy Silverado replacement and relocating the attendance booth at the recycling center.
And where, what is the concept, where's the, what's the vision on that relocation?
The booth?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right now it's currently right next to the building, so that the traffic circulation, the attendance is not there. If it's raining, you know, thunder and lightning or, or, you know, hot or cold, she has to walk to the, what the traffic pattern is. So we would relocate it away from the recycle shed into the circulation path for the permit area so that, uh, the drivers could pull up and the attendant, the, the, the building is set up for that. You know, it's got a sliding window to, um,
Smart.
greet the customers and, and, uh, be able to do that from the building.
Great.
Page seven...
Go ahead, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna say seventy-seven starts the, um, line item expenditures and seventy-eight's got the capital outlay.
Those trucks are expensive, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
There's about a ten thousand dollar, not about, there is a ten thousand dollar increase in contracted services just for the sixteen fiscal year and then it goes back down to what it historically has been in the seventeen, the financial plan for seventeen. Do we know, is there something specific?
I think there's tub grinding and screening. They don't do the screening every year, right?
Right, it's the screening, it's the screening.
Through the years, the eight or ten years it's been back there, the organics have filled up. Actually have built the grade up four or five feet in some areas. And so we're gonna, we need to take that back down, that'll be screened. It actually should create some nice topsoil that we can, um, make available as well.
Great, okay. Anyone else, any questions or... Okay.
Tab twenty.
Tab twenty is, uh, we are budgeting in and out of capital reserve fund.
Right, yeah, I couldn't get my... Right, that just, just shows your... In the, in the capital reserve and then, and then budgeting back out. Same with the communications. And then, if you'll go to tab twenty-three, we'll start with our water fund revenues. The water rates on page eighty-two, the water rates are recommended to increase four percent to cover operating costs and water line and system improvements that are associated with the water system master plan. There is no, um, recommended increase in the taps or hookups. And there is an eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar repayment from the wastewater fund. Shows your revenues on page eighty-three and then your, um, tab twenty-four, start the expenditures. Twenty-five, the water department. Got your staffing overview. And let's see here. Please turn to page ninety-two, the water admin highlights. Um, the same as with, um, the general fund, the insurance, five percent, the, um... There is the cost allocation that we discussed with the general fund, the one point seven COLA. Placement of a two thousand and two and a two thousand and three Ford Ranger pickup. Um, the contracted services to, um, increase to include the credit card, um, acceptance fee. An increase in building maintenance for the roof repairs. Your expenditures begin on page ninety-three and end on ninety-four. If you'll notice on the, um, capital outlay, we do purchase the, um, trucks with cash. We do not finance the enterprise fund, um, pickups. There's no questions, your water plant tab is, is next, um, tab twenty-six. The wholesale water rate on page ninety-seven is one dollar eighty-one five per thousand. And it does include a tank inspection per the water system master plan. Expenditures on page ninety-eight.
Can I go back to, I'm sorry, to page ninety-four for a second? Um... And under retiree health insurance, I mean, I know this is gonna be, it is what it is. My concern, not in, in what I'm seeing here, but is projecting out kind of longitude and all. Have, have we gone out with X number of years projection? I mean, you know, if you go from, I know you're estimated, you've already factored in, but the revised actuals for, or, excuse me, the, the revised budget or the, um, even the original budget for this fiscal year comparing to what we're budgeting for next fiscal year. You know, we're looking at doubling.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess projecting out, how do we think that's gonna, yeah, that's gonna impact us?
We haven't done in-house, we haven't done a long-term, um, who's going to be retired, other than those people that we know...
That you know, right.
That we know that will be retired. We, we're retiring with the benefits that allow them to have the health insurance. We do have an actuary that does tell us what our liability, uh, should be reported as, but that's just a financial accounting entry. Um, so, you know, that, that benefit does drop off when they get sixty-five.
Right.
So it's not one of those that for, it's not a forever benefit, but, um, we kind of try to keep a... Other than the two years out, no, we don't go too much further out.
Okay. And, and the actuarial that's done, in a way, that's the, that's the assurance there that if, if you're guided by the actuary...
That's what we should be putting aside, that's what we, that's technically, theoretically, we should be putting that money aside for future retirees.
So then we know if we are gonna have a, a, a significant variance years out that we're not projecting in our two-year budget. We're okay because we are, we are looking at that actuary.
Right, we are, we do keep that in mind.
Okay. Sorry.
No, no.
Just wanted to think long-term again, man, if you had a few hits like that.
Same thing with the general fund. I mean, it's the same situation for both, you know. That, this is, the number's higher than the estimated actual and vice, you know, like, it works in both funds, so...
Great, okay, I'm sorry, Debbie, can you go back where we were?
Um, on page ninety-eight, were there any questions on the, um, water plant expenditures?
Yeah, questions?
Right, I can see this... It is, and it should, actually, it should be in the plan year.
So we're not doing it in the...
No, we are not doing the tank inspections until the plan year, is that right, Steve? Steve, it's the plan year, okay, so I can exclude that li- that highlight, sorry.
On page, um, oh, one-on-one.
The, the ta- the tank inspection, it's recommended in the plan year per, per the master plan, which is reflected in your budget, that highlight's incorrect.
That's right, we moved it from the budget year to the plan year.
On page ninety-seven?
On the dollars.
That last sentence that I just read.
I was wondering about that because on page ninety-nine it shows it in the...
That's right, that, I just need to eliminate that from the highlight, I'll do that before the budget's adopted.
So the ninety-seventh thousand time, we've looked at it, we just saw it.
There's, I'm sti- I'm seeing stuff everywhere. Too many numbers.
Just a quick question, uh, I, I thought I remember hearing a fair number of years ago that about the, the tank having to have to be replaced, is that still on the horizon? Well, I mean, it is on the horizon, but how close is it horizon?
It's in the next five years, isn't it?
Seventeen, eighteen, and that may be about a twenty-four month process. So you'll be starting engineering on that.
At the same place?
Uh, yet to be determined.
Okay.
You got some land?
Got some land you want to lease it now?
No, no, I don't, no.
All right, Water Systems is next. Page one oh one, funds are included for engineering construction of the waterline conflicts and waterline, um, associated with the street construction. The funds are included for NC twelve, project three is outlined in the master plan. Funds are included for the meter replacement program is outlined in the water system master plan along with large meter and small meter parts associated with the change-out program. Purchase of an LMX one hundred smart cart and replacement of a two thousand and four F-250.
What's a smart cart?
The ground penetrating radar that you might see the guy, it kind of looks like a little lawnmower that they push over the ground to locate the pipes for when we get our, um, locate pickets installed in.
A ground penetrating radar.
Ground penetrating radar.
GPR.
It's got a little screen on it, kind of like a fish finder.
Wait.
Like, is it the beast to detect jewelry and stuff?
Yeah.
Not at all.
Okay, I didn't know what it was, thank you.
We've had, we have one that's about ten years old, so...
Um, it's on the capital outlay on page one oh three, shows you the, um, itemized capital purchasing. As you can see, that's a substantial, um, project for the NC twelve.
Water fund has a healthy fund balance, so we can pay for that out of our current funds.
Page twenty-nine, um, your wastewater revenues. Excuse me, tab twenty-nine, page one oh five, maintains current rate structure of base charges as outlined in the wastewater fund capital improvement plan.
That's good news, huh?
And then on page one oh nine, operating man- maintenance of this plant has been contracted, continues to. And as I've, I mentioned before, it does show the repla- repayment to the water fund. And if there are no additional questions, now may or that is your recommended budget.
Where, what is our current fund balance? Do you have our current fund balance?
Say it's around the five million dollar mark, isn't it? Is, um, what I call the undesigned investment.
Five million?
I say that.
Five million.
Don't you, do you agree?
And do you recall, and I don't, so, um, what we, what we budgeted in last year's budget? What we appropriated from fund balance in last year's budget?
It might be, it'll probably be in this line item, under revenue, let me see. Now, year to date, I don't know from, from, in this fiscal year, but last fiscal year, I can tell you what we...
What we budgeted.
What we appropriated from fund balance, is that the question?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry.
All right, let's see. All right, last year, the original budget was three hundred and twenty, three hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Is what we are appropriating in the...
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay.
And then so far, when this budget was being prepared, it was four hundred and seventy thousand, eight forty-seven.
Was our balance.
Was the appropriation from the undesigned fund balance as amended to that point.
Okay.
To that point.
Okay.
So essentially, when you first read out the original budget, it was three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. And as stated in the presented budget, we're only looking at forty-four thousand for this, for fiscal year sixteen.
Yes ma'am, forty-four, seven, five, six.
That's great.
It maintains above the thirty-five percent.
And that's, that's a big difference. And that's, in a healthy way, that's, that's very good. Um, one, one thing though, is there a way to run, uh, I, I'm sure there is, but to run the line item fifty-three, one hundred, or actually fifty-three, one thousand, which is your fuel line item, across all departments? And see, compare that with what we're thinking... and see, compare that with what we're thinking we're coming in with our, with our forecast for the end of the year versus what we're budgeting. And I absolutely know that we're, that we are budgeting that based on the figure that was provided. So I think, I think that sound, it does give me some concern that we likely could be revisiting this if that number doesn't hold as low as they're, they're stating. Um, you know, because several different departments that I was looking in, you know, it may be a, a $10,000 difference here and a four thousand or five thousand dollar difference, but I'm just curious if you were to do a consolidated roll-up of that line item, not necessarily to recommend changing anything in what's being presented, but just for us to be mindful that.
That's my idea.
What could be, so to speak, some liability moving into the year if we have to do some type of amendment or pull from fund balance at that point. Okay, hopefully it'll be right, and it's okay that we budgeted in line with that, and it's conservative, but that's really probably the only thing that gives me any headache of uncertainty, that that could end up being a, a big variance, hopefully. Any other, any overall questions from anyone, comments?
Going on the budget, yeah.
Um, I just want to thank, thanks to all the staff that are here, um, for putting this together, I think you guys, your departments here, and Debbie, you guys did a great, a really good job with this. Um, I think we've been able to go through it at the pace we have because of how well it was put together, um, and nothing a, at all glaring, I think we're doing a, a great job moving forward in, um, trying to, you know, mitigate some of the issues we've had over, over the years when the, um, you know, when there was much tougher economic times, even though things are tight, I think we're making some, some nice strides in the right direction, um, with respect to, to staff, um, but also just in general with our departments, whether it's supplies or capital outlay that we need to, to really make sure we're protecting the long-term interest of our assets in our town, and, and our greatest asset being our personnel, so. Thank you very much for what you guys have done.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Great job.
And I guess the next step is our, um, pub, public hearing, which is scheduled for our next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
On the budget. Yes. Great.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you have anything else for tonight?
I have one quick thing I forgot to mention earlier on Commissioner's agenda. I want to give, um, some kudos to the Public Works Department, a real quick story. A citizen on Swan Street said she was walking her kids home from school on Baum Street. You come down, uh, veterans return up Baum, and, um, one of the high school kids wasn't paying attention, went off the road and almost hit them, so she ended up with Steve about, she wanted to put a stop sign on Baum, so it'd be a four-way stop it, and Steve said that just doesn't work, that's a collector street, is that right?
Yeah, one's a collector, one's local, I guess, so MBTC wouldn't.
And besides, if you put a stop sign there, I know the traffic comes around there all the time at the bottom of my street, I mean, they'd be, they'd be backed up to the rec park, you know. So he come up with the idea of cutting through the paper street corridor, which is next to my house, which I don't have a problem with, and making a path, and they started on that yesterday, and they've completed it today. Um, they're just waiting to get some mulch to put down to stabilize it, and then, so all they have to do is cross at the bottom there and come up, and then they can go over to Swan and all the other streets without having to walk up Baum Street.
Nice.
And I think it's a great idea, and it resurrects the idea that we've talked about in the past of trying to connect some neighborhoods, especially around the school, but not just there either, there's places where you have to walk what would be equivalent of several blocks and then go over and come back to go someplace, but if you, there's places where strategically you could cut through, and the only cost is labor and whatever it costs us to have the mulch ground, so. Uh, it was really neat, if you go by, if you want to go by there, it's really cool to look at, and it's just kind of neat to see that path open up.
Is there potential for putting a spot for bicycles to go there as well?
I don't know if a bike could ride on it or not, but, uh, we talked about doing some kind of hard surface, but that would require a lot of maintenance and, but it's something we could talk about, you know, never know.
Great responsiveness.
Yes, very, very good.
Anything else? All right, a motion would be out or adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, thanks again.
Thanks, everybody, for coming and staying.